The Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, I'll get Commissioner Fleming to give us the indication of when.
That's great.
I want to be coming again in your name and thank you for your many blessings. We still have plenty, we thank you how you want, stole and kept us. Pray that you bless us this day in our commission meeting, bless our fellow commissioners. Be with us, keep us safe, help us to understand, help us do your will. God, we love you for all things and we thank you for all things. We pray that you be with us this day, this place before Wall. Watch over, protect us, keep us safe, help us agree, help us do your will, help us take care of county businesses. If you see fear, God bless those that ain't harmed, sweetie. Watch over, protect those of God and have mercy. Give it to sick everywhere, to the refilled everywhere. I would be excited, many more blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Agreed.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to approval of minutes for the May third, two thousand and twenty-two regular board meeting. Is there any discussion or motion for approval? So the motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same as I. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're going to pull item number eight and twelve, and item nine was removed previously. So for items two through seven, ten, eleven, and thirteen through seventeen. Do I have any discussion or a motion for approval? Chairman, I have a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor? All opposed, same as I. Item number eight, approval of agreement of North Park Professional Services Incorporated for Architectical Engineering Services for Design. For the building for the C D V G dash C V multi-use building. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, number eight and number twelve are very similar with respect to the way that they're coming to the board at this time. This is for the agreement for design and engineering services for the building and the site services that are going to be required for the construction of this five million dollar multipurpose building that we recently heard about. Number eight is, number twelve is similar because both of these share something unique in that the services are being incurred on that particular grant of this building in a very different order than what we typically anticipate. Normally, we would have to have the agreement executed by the grant entity and approved by D E O. And then we would begin the R F Q process for procuring these types of services. In this particular case, months back into last year, I think it was in the fall when we made this application for this funding, we were told at that time that we actually received extra points if we went ahead and went through the R F Q process and could identify the engineer and the third-party administrator with the application. And that's what we actually did. So we went ahead and went through the R F Q process. We just did it before the application rather than after the application approval and executed agreement. I have never experienced this before, but it's one process that they had outlined with the application. So we began asking them, you know, I think I announced previously that one major concern I have with this particular project is that we're supposed to have this building completed in two years and it can't be done. I told the grant administrators that at the very beginning, the very first meeting that we had. They communicated that they felt that there was going to have to be some type of extension because we weren't the only ones that were going to run into this problem on this funding. So early on, we began asking for an exception so that we could go ahead and begin the environmental review, which can take six to eight months, and then also go ahead, which would actually be undertaken by, in this case, Fox Enterprises, and go ahead and begin the design work as well. So they sent us those, an agreement, they communicated to us that they would approve an exception. And then we, more recently, kept drilling the question about being reimbursed for these expenses. So what I just circulated amongst you Commissioners was those correspondence regarding the environmental review. And if you go through those, you'll see where I circled some areas of underlying them, making it very clear when we were asking what they were approving. I wish these pages were numbered, but unfortunately they aren't. Let me, I'll try to get you to, you'll see those in your packets, but the email dated April twenty-sixth, this was Shannon communicating with them. And you'll see their response. This is specifically about launching the environmental study and the engineering design work for the COVID has isolation facility. That's what all this started under. Let's see if this is the one. Email is submitted in response, this is response back to him, that's staged in the D E O exemption approval memo. Costs by the county incurred relative to the environmental review and grant administration are considered allowable, hence our costs. However, the county may not submit for reimbursement of those costs until after the sub-grant agreement is been executed. So the exception was that we could go ahead and begin, that's on a previous page. Engineering plan design can be started, but we're not going to get reimbursed for it until after they get us the agreement. And we know that we received that nice plastic check back in, I think, February. But the D E O has not forwarded that agreement yet. And it isn't just our agreement. My understanding is there are lots of agreements similar to that we haven't forwarded. I don't know if it's a staffing issue or what's going on. So the board needs to decide, if you want to go forward with this, go ahead and get the work done. As you know, our grants are all reimbursement grants. We incur the work, we pay the cost of the work, and then we get reimbursement with the grants. Typically, we would have the executed agreement by now. I have no idea why it's taking them so long to process these things, but that's where we are. The federal people said yes. D E O is acknowledging, yes, you've got the exception. You go ahead and receive, these are allowable expenses according to them. We do the work. We just wanted them to say in writing that we would get reimbursed. So the question is whether or not you want to incur that expense now and then wait for the agreement to be executed and then forward. But we don't have to wait. Most of you may know, on projects that are done in, as percentages of completion, they can bill. And then we can submit reimbursement requests for those along the way rather than waiting till the very end. In this particular case, I would, I would guess right now that well, I would anticipate that the agreement would be finished for sure before the environmental review is completed. It just takes so long. The designer engineering is going to take quite some time as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, do you know, I see, I think from our page there, that the two hundred and fourteen thousand, I know that's reimbursable, but on the environmental review, do you have a number in which, dollar figure in which we would be out, so to speak, until that agreement came back and we started getting reimbursements? When you, do you have a quote or a, I'm just curious, is that two hundred thousand or is that a hundred thousand or?
Two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars.
So we would be out two fifty-four plus two fourteen if we agreed to move forward and wait on the reimbursement?
Right.
Two, two fifty, again, two fifty-four?
Two fifty-four, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three thousand. That's the, that's on item twelve, right? That's the bottom.
That's correct. Yeah, I think that's, you were asking for the total of both services though.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harris, just to follow up on that, Mr. Land's question, should I mention that?
Can I correct something before you go any further? This two fifty-four is for the total third-party administration. If you look at number one on program delivery services on the second page, you'll see fifteen thousand dollars for the environmental review.
Under twelve, under?
Under twelve.
What page, Mr. Harris?
It's, go to the very last page of behind tab twelve.
Okay, I see it right now.
Yeah, top of the page. Now that fifteen thousand, all right, it actually takes a lot longer than just about anything else on there. So far as they're involved in that, because the rest of it will actually be done and they're going to be kind of monitoring and working alongside us.
So are we just paying the fifteen thousand or are we paying the whole thing? What was?
I think that was the question I was going to ask is that, I think you mentioned, Mr. Harris, that you don't pay it all at one time because it's a draw or however you want to say. There's a good chance you'll have the funding before the end of the.
I, I'm believing that the agreement will get to us before the environmental review is completed because it takes so long for them to do that. And it's kind of misleading to say it's an environmental review, it really, that's only one part of it. They also sent, sent letters to agencies all over the place and asked for their comments.
So are you asking, I'm, I'm, I'm just, are you asking to pay both of these, all, the total of both of them now? Or are we just going to pay it out based on the work that's done?
You would pay it out as the work is done because you're not going to approve this thing and then send me an invoice. They've got to design all this, there's a lot of work that has been done, been done on the engineering. And then on the third-party administration, that will track with us throughout the life of the entire grant.
And as those invoices get submitted and back to the board, anyhow?
They will bill incrementally of those.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, but I think, Commissioner, I think that, I mean, once we agree to do it, they start sending invoices, I mean.
Mr. Harris.
And that's kind of like where the beginning of my question was. You said you felt like we had the funding, but how long did it take for then you to get to a point to send us a bill?
I believe there's a chance that we'll incur some expenses before we have the grant agreement in place, that's entirely possible.
But not a half million dollars?
Oh, no, it didn't really have the eight dollars.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I was just.
It's okay, we're trying to put the D E O on the spot. We've called and called and called and, you know, we're still waiting for the agreement. If we weren't in this situation on the timeline, I'm trying to get this thing constructed, I would say let's just wait. They just put us in a unique situation here, and that's why early on, we asked for the exception. Because typically, our C D V G grants do not allow for us to incur any services or even enter into an agreement for services prior to time that the C D V G agreement itself is executed between the county and C D V G.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I mean, we're, we're in May, I don't see us spending a half million dollars before October first.
I don't either.
And if we got to three hundred?
We stop.
You got your finger on that somewhere?
If we get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we don't have an agreement, we just stop.
I don't want, overall, we get ourselves inside of a bush here, sorry.
I agree, I agree. I feel confident we're going to receive, I mean, we could get the agreement tomorrow, I don't have any idea. We continually quiet about it, they just haven't produced it yet.
Any other board members want to weigh in on this?
I will tell you that the last couple of years have been pretty difficult to get agreements at a time and matter anyway. And I'm not faulting anyone at the state level for that, it's just been a fact. I'll be sharing a fact with you that a lot of these agreements are taking much longer than we have previously experienced. So it's just, it's just something that's been a hurdle for a couple of years now.
Do they still work alone?
Some of them do. Some of them do. I have regretfully reported that I think sometimes we're completing, competing with laundry and other normal household desks. It appears that way in some of the Zoom meetings, we have to.
Any other discussion?
No, I mean, I would just say that I would, I mean, I, we gotta, we can't just sit here and wait on that agreement. So if we're going to do the building, I mean, the time, I'm sure that, I'm sure that hopefully they would be considered of an extension after twenty-four months. But nevertheless, we need to make a valiant effort of trying to hit that mark I feel like. But I mean, I would be okay with moving forward if we kept it at like three hundred thousand within this fiscal year. I think we could buy three hundred if we had to get there, but a half million might be a little more valid, but. And then we don't get to follow in reimbursements by October first, which is when we'll start with this.
I think benchmark is the agreement, they just need to get us the agreement and then we're good to go.
If we pick the spot right, you know, we do.
Yes. It's on, it's down in Park out there by the next library.
Really, I didn't know that.
Oh, it's, it's actually, it's on Goldkiss, the thirty acres we purchased on Goldkiss.
I just wanted to make sure that's where we should go ahead.
So, so far, that's the property that has been identified for grant applications for this building and for the D E O C.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion for approval, is it eight and twelve?
Yeah, I, I'll do it. If I can say correctly, Commissioner Land, I would move to approve item number eight and number twelve with the cap of up to three hundred thousand within this fiscal year.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same as I. Motion, period, second. At this time, we're going to move on to time-specific items. The five oh five were seen thereafter, and the committee held a hold of public hearing to consider adoption of resolution approving special permit for temporary use request S P T U forty-two dash oh four dash one by American Promotional Events. T N T fireworks, three grand special permit for temporary use. Mr. McIs. Just to prove that.
Yes, sir. Okay, if anybody anticipates that they're going to give testimony in this public hearing, would you raise your right hand, be sworn in, please? Please stand up. Thank you, sir. Each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're giving before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God. Thank you. As you approach the podium, if you would please, an address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application that you have before tonight is a special permit for temporary use. Number twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one. It's a special permit by American Promotional Events, doing business T N T fireworks. I think this is the eleventh and twelfth application that's come forward, the commission, they do a twice-a-year sale event from the tent. And Walmart, usually first of the year for New Year's and July the fourth for the Independence Day sale. So the request is to do a tent sale or the Fourth of July event starting June twenty-first through July the fifth of two thousand and twenty-two. Same company that holds the event twice a year, we've never had any complaints or compliment or complaints or issues with the company. They still go through the Fire Marshal's office at their inspection for their tent setup and fire extinguisher is a permit to Tim White when they get ready to do the event. And he goes out and does an inspection on that. You have a proposed resolution in your packet for approval, the board should choose to approve that and approve that. Do adopt that as part of your approval process. I don't have anything else to add on this item, I would enter the file into the record at this time.
Mr. McIs.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take it to the file and it's composite exhibit number one.
Is there any questions in staff board? At this time, I'll open the floor, public comment, anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing not all closed public comment. Any other board discussion? Not, do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fleming. Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same as I. Item number nineteen, five oh five were seen thereafter, hold of public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance approving L D R twenty-two dash oh two. An application by Jacqueline Michael Taylor to amend the official zoning atlas of the land, of the land development regulations by changing zoning district from residential single-family one to residential single-family mobile home one. Mr. McIs.
Hey, at this time, yes, sir. Just because it is a different item, even though it's under the, you know, the time-specific items, if somebody else is going to testify with this particular item, would you please stand, be sworn in? Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony that you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God. Thank you very much. Again, as you approach the podium, please state your full name and address.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a rezoning request to change the zoning on a three-point-two-nine acre parcel from R S F one to R S F one M H one, which is a more of a mixed-use zoning district. Residential single-family, R S F one limits destruction of residential homes to single-family residential homes. R S F one M H ones will allow more single-family residential homes or mobile homes. Both of these zoning districts, whether it's R S F one or R S F one M H one, require a residential one land use category. The county has two maps that we go by, the first is your land use, your land use map, and the second one is your zoning atlas. Those maps have to match so that you don't have any inconsistencies. Can't rezone a piece of property to a zoning designation in which the underlying land use does not match. In this case, we do not have to amend the future land use map of the county because it's already residential one, density being one dwelling unit per acre. So in this situation, we have a proposed mixed-use zoning which will allow for replacement of a mobile home. The general location of the property is at the Dead End Street and on the Ninety-sixth Trail. Ninety-sixth Trail intersects with One Hundred and Ninth Drive, which is a north-south road. And that road leads you back to Higgetuckee Road. And Higgetuckee Road runs between One Twenty-Nine South and County Road Forty-Nine. The existing land use pattern of surrounding lands is split between a mixture of single-family homes and mobile homes. Ms. Taylor, which is the applicant, has submitted an application for mobile home with the building department and thus doing the zoning compliance. It would determine that the zoning of the property was R S F one. I believe the width of the mobile home that she had, that she currently owns and was attempting to place on the property is sixteen-foot wide. To be classified under single-family dwelling, structures have to be either side-built home or meet the design requirements of a residential design manufactured home, which states it has to be at least twenty people with and come in on a double section. So Ms. Taylor's options at that time was to change the home of which she was trying to permit, this home that she has, she currently owns, or petition the county to rezone that property in question to a zoning designation that would allow replacement of the sixteen-foot wide mobile home. She did submit the application, we went through the public hearing process, the application actually went before planning, is only for recommendation. The April meeting of the zoning board, recommendation is only for, was to approve, is only for that. At this time, if I had, if the board has any questions, I'd be, I would answer them. If not, I would enter the file into the record.
Are there other mobile homes in that?
Yes. It's a, it's not a subdivision, it's a, it's kind of, a lot of the lands that are down that road is owned by family. I went back, when we, we had, kind of had this discussion, this zoning board meeting, and I know there's a mixture of single-family residences and mobile homes. I think there's about six mobile homes in that generalized area. There's probably six or seven single-family homes in that general area. So it's about half and half.
Are they double-wise or?
Some of them are double-wise, some of them are single-wise. You know, when you look at when those mobile homes were put there, a lot of them were placed there in the late eighties, early nineties. A lot of times, it was hard in the, in the later nineties, early two thousands to actually figure out what the zoning was on the property. We weren't able to have imagery that we can overlay with property boundaries and zoning information until two thousand and seven. So prior to that date, we were using old, folded-up maps and scale rule. So, I mean, it was best available data, so some of those mobile homes that would have been permitted at that time might have actually, you know, thought that the zoning was one thing, when in actuality, it was another. Based on the zoning map, you're only about a thousand feet from the city limits line. On the city limits boundary there, their zoning designation is agriculture. About fifteen hundred feet to two thousand feet away, you have the last piece of property, I think, that's put in the city's jurisdiction before you get into the county, which is a mobile home bar. So in that general area, within, you know, fifteen hundred to two thousand feet, there are several mobile homes put there.
That lot's, what, three-point-two-nine acres?
Three-point-two-nine acres, it's at the very end of the road, it's the last piece of property on the south side of the road.
And you said it's one per acre?
The density is one dwelling unit per acre, so one acre would be the minimum lot size required.
Well, the reason I'm asking that question is that if there's three acres there, if we change this, can she put one, put three mobile homes there?
The density will still apply, so if the property was sup, proposed to be separated, subdivision regulation would pick again. So unless someone's willing to go down the path of paving that road, which the county would enjoy, they may not, you know, propose to do that.
So the, where the other mobile homes are in this piece of property here, I'm assuming it was off, were they grandfathered in?
Some of them were grandfathered in, some of them, like I said before, were permitted at a point in time where you would think that best available data, what it, what it flew to the property would probably assume to be zoned to AG two and not R S F one. AG two zoning does allow for, for homes, but it's not within that land expansion. The underlying land use being residential, your options would be R S F one or R S F one M H one. We don't have a lot of R S F one M H zoning within the urban development area of Live. We do have some, a lot of it's mostly located off of One Hundred and Twenty-Ninth Road, which is the Old Douglas Ferry Road heading back towards One Thirty-Six. Where you find a majority of the R S F one M H one zoning is within the urban development area of Down Park. And it is scattered in there tremendously. A lot of them may be made with Butterfield Acres as a prime example. It's R S F one M H one, and in that subdivision, you have a mixture of single-family residential as well as mobile home. But it's just not a ton of that zoning designation within the urban development area of Live. And one of the things that, you know, is unique with zoning changes and that the board can look at is what is the existing land use pattern? Of course, you wouldn't go into an area where you have established single-family residences all around, you can isolate one single lot to be placed for a mobile home. You can kind of look at your existing land use pattern and say, what is the established precedent? In this situation, it's about half, it's about fifty-two, single-family residential.
Mr. Chairman.
Question for you.
She owned the three-point-two acre.
Yes, sir.
Own three-point-two acres. What are they asking, they changed it from, you know, I know, maybe they already changed it from one single home home to a.
They're not, they're not, they're not proposing to change anything with the density. The density is already there. I mean, without changing the zoning, the density is one home per, per acre. It's simply a zoning request that would change R S F one, which only allows for side-built homes or modular homes or residential design manufactured homes, to a zoning district that would still allow that, but include mobile homes on that single piece of property.
What are the other lots that individuals own there? Nine acre two acre? Nine acre to eight acre?
It's about the same. Her lot is actually probably one of the bigger ones that's on that, on that side. I believe her mother lives next door, her uncle's across the street, cousin's next door, that. So, it's mostly family that live down that road.
So, in other words, if this changes, then she can do the modular home, just get prepared for that.
She could do a modular home, build a home, or place the mobile home that she currently owns. And that's, you know, she, she's here and she could answer some of these questions. But just in conversation with her when she submitted her mobile home permit, she owns this mobile home. It's currently located on another piece of property. And they're wanting to relocate that mobile home to this piece of property that they currently own.
Well, I'd like to hear her, you have a statement.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Meeks? I appreciate them laying it out. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Name and address for the record.
Jackie Taylor, one-eight-seven-two-four-ninety-six, Trail Avenue, Florida, three-two-zero-six-seven.
That's me. I think what Commissioner Fleming is just wanting to do.
I want to hear, hear what you, what you're proposing there, what you think.
What I want to do is, I have a single lot now. Again, I had no idea that this was owned, other than I grew up on that road. I lived on that road all my life. And there's plenty of single lives, plenty of houses. It's make sure, I had no idea that there was an issue with this when I first went into it. My mom and dad are at the age that they are needing someone to help take care of them. They have a two-story house right next to me. They, well, right next to the property. They can't keep up with it. So, we are wanting to move over there so we can take care of them. It'll never be sold, it'll never be divided, I mean, as long as I'm alive anyways. It's family land. My family has lived at the end of that street for fifty, sixty-something years. They were the first ones that bought on that road, as a matter of fact.
I feel pretty for neighbors that go through all the time and do this for.
It's actually my aunt's property that I bought, that I bought, that's right next to my mom and dad. And she passed, well, it's been a while since she passed away, but I just finally talked my cousin into letting me buy it so I can move in next to my mom and dad.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that Mr. Meeks filed for something in terms of zoning. And that is in favor of, I'm not following the recommendation.
Anyone else?
No, I agree with Mr. Segal. I mean, the board, that's what we have that board for, particular recommendations. And it would be different if there was nothing but homes on that road, in my opinion. But I know the road very well, there's only a lot of people down there, so I don't want to follow.
Mr. Mayor.
I would agree, Mr. Chairman. It's mixed already. Most of it's her fault. Can't vote. I don't have anybody here from the public that I see that lives out there speaking against it. I don't want to follow that.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Without what closed public comment?
Before we move forward, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Mr. Meeks. Mr. Meeks, is there an exhibit that you would like to submit to the board as part of the application?
Did I miss anything?
Yeah. You didn't, you didn't put the file in as, as an exhibit. So, I'm asking you, are you?
I thought I did that, but I won't hear the files.
I think you did it in the last one without this one.
This one, this one as well.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
So, that being said, is there any other board discussion, or do I have a motion to adopt? Motion by Commissioner Segal. Seconded by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor of I? All opposed, same sign.
Thank the President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's our committee commissioner Adams at this time. County, Mr. Attorney, any county attorney Adams at this time?
Yes, sir. I have done an item that's on the additional agenda item on address. Thank you.
Moving on to item number twenty, our general business, can't discuss road projects. Mr. Harris.
Commissioners, we gave you an updated packet, which isn't terribly different than what we had sent out earlier. But we had some twelfth-hour updates in the, this item. So, I'm going to try to go through these with you, touch on each section in this packet. And first, I'd like to just have you, what might expedite this better is if I ask if there are any questions on some of these spreadsheets. And some of them I'll go over with you. Essentially, what I did was give you a history of all county-funded road projects starting in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. That's when we started the chip seal program and we just took all projects since then. You'll note that this isn't titled Chip Seal Roads, and neither are these other spreadsheets, because we really started doing lots of other things in addition to chip seal, where we need repairs to asphalt roads. We've gotten into business of doing temporary repairs to roads, waiting for DOT to come forward with some of their projects. In other cases, the board has funded construction of asphalt roads. Even in the current year, we have one of those. So, I've just tried to give you the best overall information that I could. That last column on the right says proposed projects. That's in another section that I'll cover in just a moment. I'll bring that to your attention. I'm going to point out a couple of things. As you look at this, and you'll see some of this information later, in District One, we've got an engineer's estimate that's different than the number that was budgeted. That column you see under twenty-twenty-two in here, those are budgeted items that we approved back in the budget workshop. But on District One, the engineer's estimate for that particular project is actually two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars. We budgeted a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Another footnote in District Three, back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we had a project that was done. It required escrowing for, and in my mind, it was at least six years, it may not longer. But that was a program that the board used to be involved in, and we don't do anymore. But it was gas tax revenue. And I just wanted to point out that that wasn't something that more of approved in a single budget year. It was actually something that had been escrowed for a significant amount of time. If you don't have any questions, or if you do, go ahead and ask. Otherwise, I'll go on and move to tab two of your books. Any questions on that spreadsheet? On tab two, I want to give you a mid-year update on where we are with our twenty-twenty-two projects. We have some that have been completed, chip seal roads. I think I mentioned this previously in a meeting, but we try to start these chip seal road projects early, very early in the fiscal year. More importantly, we're trying to get them, most of them completed before it starts raining, because there's so much lime rock that we're moving in preparation, and it just works better that way. So, we've completed the biggest portion of those. There's one that the actual surface treatment will be put on in another week or two. So, I think all of those chip seal roads will be completed. Our work, base work is completed, but there's one more visit by the company to put the surface treatment on some of those here pretty quick. Starting in District One, though, and we had, one reason that I gave you an updated packet was we had this particular road in District One, and the wrong district with the previous spreadsheet that was done. So, that was a correction. But I want to point out again that we budgeted a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. This is for the road by Fusion Baffet that goes back to the west. It needs to be, it's an asphalt road. It needs to be reconstructed. Engineer's estimate's two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars plus the cost of the task order. We purchased a paving machine for really trying to perform a lot of those band-aids that we were paying a disproportionately higher cost for, by paying a company to do them. But we haven't really considered setting up to start paving miles of asphalt road with that machine. In my opinion, we'd rather go ahead and bid this road. I think commissioners, some of you have probably participated in discussions regarding some potential future development in that area that's going to require a more substantial road than what has been there. It's my opinion that when that road was constructed years ago, it really wasn't built to a standard that you would build it to for a lot of heavy daily traffic. So, my recommendation would be that we agree that we're going to go ahead and bid this project and just fund that difference when the time comes. Now, District Three, we're involved in the County Road Two-Fifty repairs right now. But I'm of the opinion that the three-hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted is considerably more than what it's going to cost to finish those repairs using our paving machine. We're also installing geotextile fabric. My estimate is about forty-two thousand dollars for those repairs, which leaves a significant amount of money left over. The, and let me just go ahead and move down. If you look to the bottom left, you'll see a proposal next to that footnote. What I would ask the board to do is consider allowing us to do a couple of things with the balance of that funding. One is to repair an asphalt road that needs repair. It's One Hundred-and-seventy-seventh Road. My estimate on the actual asphalt for that is about fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's with us just milling the existing asphalt off. This is a portion of the road. Part of the road is in better condition, but this is the south end of it. It's in pretty rough shape. We could mill that out, touch up the lime rock out there, put the density on it, and then repave it with our machine. It's about two thousand feet long. And then, we could go ahead and start, again, we're talking about using the balance of funding from County Road Two-Fifty. We could go ahead and begin the chip seal roads on One Hundred-and-fifty-fifth Loop and One Hundred-and-fifty-fifth Lane. Based on the estimate, using our bid numbers for chip seal, I'll give you an estimated cost of ninety thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars on that. And I think that number is going to be pretty close to what it should cost. Here's one caveat that I can't believe, I'll just comment on it. We know that some of these materials are going up in price, but I still believe that we can complete those projects within that budgeted amount of money. If the board will allow us to go ahead and do that, we can start that in the current fiscal year and just fit those projects in as we can get to them. I would, I would go ahead and complete One Hundred-and-seventy-seventh Road first, only because we'll be paving those sections of Two-Fifty that we're currently working on. And then, we can move the paving machine over to One Hundred-and-seventy-seventh and go ahead and complete that at the same time. And then, move into One Hundred-and-fifty-fifth Loop and Lane. Any questions on that?
Yeah, that, that should read in District Three a little bit, yes.
It makes it District Three.
I'm just saying, because we're taking the money out of District Three on another project to complete.
District Three, the book says one, but it should be.
I'm just saying for the record, it's staying in District Three.
You've got the new book?
Yes, sir. This one is just a, maybe.
The footnote just says, it says utilize funds for the following projects in District One.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. It, it shows it in the schedule, and that's just District Three. But you're saying right there, it should have been a three. You're correct. On the footnote. That is in District Three. Those, those projects, in fact, all three of them, the two, working on Two-Fifty and the two projects that I just spoke over all in District Three.
Yeah, I just for the record, I want people to know that his money that he had allocated was staying in his district.
Thank you.
That's what we're asking you guys to approve.
So, that really would be a change from what was approved by the board earlier. And, Mr. Chairman, it's your pleasure to entertain some consideration of that before I continue or I can continue with all of this. And you can do what you want to do.
Just continue.
Okay. In District Three, on the schedule up above, you see One Hundred-and-fifty-third Road due construction. We had budgeted seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for that. The engineer's estimate is a thousand forty-one, three-hundred-and-twenty?
Eighteen. A million forty-one.
Oh, sorry. A million, a million. I like the thousand better.
I do, too.
Thousand actually served with my next comments better. I, I was going to suggest that, and I've talked to Commissioner Land about this. We can bid this project, but this is a project that if the board wants to save money, we could go out there and perform all of the base work and then bid out just the asphalt, let a company come asphalt that project, and we would save a pile of money.
Fifty-one.
Yes, sir.
Go to Two-Fifty?
Goes.
Yes.
Down to the north.
That's, that's correct.
Oh.
To Two-O-Eighth or something. Is that where it ends?
It ends, it connects three.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one to Two-Fifty, that occurs from Three-Forty-Nine.
Okay. In any event, what we budget is considerably less than what the engineer's estimate is, a million forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty. And then, I added some other expenses. A hundred thousand dollars is potentially any takings that are involved that cost us money. And then, some fences and other things that would be involved. And then, the task order for the engineering work. That is not going to get completed in this year. You've got an email in your packet from the engineer that says it would be eight to nine months getting all the engineering completed and permitting and everything else associated with that. So, I'm just pointing out that that's the ways out. When the engineering is completed, we could bid the project and then the board could decide. But again, I'm just suggesting to you that as an alternative to spending all that money, if we built it, everything except the asphalt, just bid the asphalt out, then it saves us a significant amount of money. But it's really the base work and everything else that requires a lot of time. That's where the expense is on that particular road. And District Four, the chip seal on Forty-Eighth Street has been completed. That was budgeted seventy-five thousand. That task order was fifty-three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents. We still have to start County Road Ten-A repairs. We budgeted three-fifty, engineer's estimate's four-fifty. I'd like to use some arm wrestling with the engineer on that. But that's what his estimate is. Let's see if we can bring those numbers down. And then, we still have the repairs to do on County Road One-Thirty-Seven. Repairs similar to what we're doing on County Road Two-Fifty right now. So, I've given you some estimates on the months that we might get to these projects and maybe complete some of them. When you get to District Five, One Hundred-and-ninety-sixth chip seal is completed. The other two that are there, really, our ninety-nine percent, probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the county's work is completed on One Hundred-and-ninety-second, Seventy-Seven. We're just waiting for the company to come back. They initially said that they were having difficulty getting the stone, the granite gravel for that project. But then, they called us recently, and I'm thinking maybe another week or two, that will be completed as well. If the weather holds up and if nothing changes on their availability of the materials required. So, that's kind of a general update. Now, you've got a couple of other projects down here that after the board approved, let me just say for the public's benefit, what we typically do about this time every year is we put the road list together. We bring it to the board, and we would typically ask for approval. And then, I will take those estimates and numbers and put them in the budget worksheets, and then, we'll wrestle with them again during the budget workshops. And that's what I'm going to get to in just a moment. But I only point that out because you've got two other roads down here below the spreadsheet. They were added after we went through that exercise. And that's the streets for the city. One is constructing the new road of Home and then repaving a portion of Eva. I don't have numbers on those. If I had to speculate, though, I'd say Eva, being a repave, if we go out there and nail that, maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars is what that would cost. Home is a little bit different. We agreed to go out there and build the road, but I don't know how much of it we're building. And we didn't really talk about that. Are we doing just the base and then the city is bidding out the asphalt? Or are we trying to do it all? Or the board should kind of have to give us some guidance on that, because I don't know. Again, I know that my aunt shared the work was in actually preparation, the putting lime rock in, blocks it out. Again, I know that the land shared the work was in actually preparation, the putting line lock in, boxing out, putting action on it, getting ready for the asphalt. But we never did really complete the conversation at the time, but we agreed to do it. So it hasn't been programmed then, we don't have a number for it right now.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any type of idea on the, does it pay the cost of Palm?
If I, well, that's a tough question. Let me say probably between $50,000 and $75,000 for asphalt if we were to hire somebody to asphalt that. Again, the real work is in preparation of the base. You know, we go in there and we just would take whatever time it takes to punch that thing out and get the base ready, which I think would be a concern. I know just like our projects outside of the city, it's considerable savings. But again, I haven't spoken to the city about any part of this. No, they're prepared to spend the money on the asphalt tonight.
I mean, I believe they are, I think we've done it as a joint venture. And my thoughts historically was us to box it out, do the base, and let's see possibly do a portion of the paving. I know we could talk earlier about possibly using our machine, but I was a little behind schedule with that machine and teaching folks.
Yeah, we just got the, in fact, we just got the tack machine, track tack trailer last week. So we haven't had a chance to even use that machine yet. We're prepared to, like I said earlier, it's much easier to go out and do those Band-Aid repairs and do small stretches and give them an opportunity to learn how to use the machine. The vendor is going to come out and work that out and help on that as well. And we'll be helping some other people, but.
I know they have allocated some funds for it, but also they have spent money on doing the plans and those things. So I feel confident that they could handle that, the paving portion of it. And we hand them the values, I mean, that's a pleasure to be able to see.
But, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Sayre, I think some of the early talks I had with the city were the same thing. You said you were in charge of the base, which is the majority of the work, the expensive part.
Only question on that Palm Street, was there, was there not some water, sewer issues, utility issues there that had to be straightened?
Well, I'm going to check with them because I have not have been a part of any engineering or anything. But I'll find out on that before we go in there and start boxing that thing out. Clearly, they need to have whatever utilities work completed before we go in there and do what we need to do. We don't want to build a road and have them there with street saws right behind us.
I think the discussion was one time, maybe, I think it's.
It is on the right side.
Yeah, I think they're on the road.
But I think they were running over to the other side.
They wanted to stub some up on the other side, I'm sorry. They wanted to stub some up basically for future. So they had to cut the, cut the road and jack and roll and save that expense.
So my, my only thing was that they prepared their utilities before we go do.
We'll check with them for sure then. I mean, we've got, unless the board wants to change what schedule and output together on the schedule, it's going to be a while before we get there anyway. So I'll check with them and they'll have plenty of time to do whatever they need to do while we're involved with these other projects. In any event, I just want to point that out. The carryovers that you see down here, those are projects you've had on the books for quite a while. And I've got some questions I want to talk to some of the engineers about on the Coliseum. And that Swan Lake was a project where we were just going to try to help out. I think it's the water conservation or somebody owns that. Maybe it's the game commission. I can't even remember who owns that property out there, but they had inquired about some assistance previously. And we talked about going in there a number of years ago, maybe just doing a chip seal. That's why that's been carried over. But it is not in the schedule and isn't going to interfere with what we're already trying to do on that spreadsheet that you see at the top. But if the board decides you want to continue to carry those items. It'd be nice one day though to do something with the Coliseum and we'll get enough activity there now. Or it'd be really nice to cut down on the dust and do some improvements out there.
Well, by my figures, we're about $214,000 under on some, like the County Road 250 and on some of these chip seal projects. And we're over $200, I mean, roughly $100,000 on 68 Terrace, is that?
We're going to be over on 68 Terrace. Depending on how the board agrees on 153rd, we'd be over quite a bit more. But again, if you'll allow us to go up there and build that, box it out, do the base, do the expensive part, it just takes longer. And I know there's a train off here, so that would put us over quite a bit on that project. Clearly, we've got enough money to go ahead and do these projects and stay within budget in the current fiscal year. I particularly recognize that 153rd won't, won't get started. I mean, the construction portion, the big part, really wouldn't get started until after design is completed. And once that taking line is established, defenses, setbacks, defenses and other things like that, those types of things could be done. It would be some power poles, but you're not going to incur a great deal of construction expense in the next year.
Which line you want to see?
Yeah, I mean, I want to see the road paved, but I'm all about saving money. So, Mr. Harrison, I've spoken about this on the phone a couple of times. And I'm in agreement with, you know, letting, letting our guys do the base work, try to keep that number closer, closer or below the $750 that we initially agreed on. So, and then, you know, if we're still below, bid out the asphalt. It's just, it's right at a mile or just over a mile. I mean, it's straight, no curves, so.
A lot of truck traffic.
A lot of semi-heavy truck traffic cutting across. But no, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with the county doing the base work on that one. And, you know, while I'm at it, I would just ask in the board to consider the need of those, the excess of 250, the budget 300, Commissioner Harrison ran a lot of numbers and sees where we're at right now and thinks there'll be money left over from that. If I could keep that money in chip sealed 155th, we've talked about that road before. I think everyone knows what's on that road. Those folks have promised to them, previous commissioner and just COVID and everything, yeah, and I know it. And then 177th, Mr. Harrison talked a lot about that one. That's a paved road, about $1,700, $2,000 feet, Mr. Harrison.
That's going to be correct. I, I think we could rip that much asphalt out and redo it. And then that one, I would say let's go take our paving machine over there and we'll leave 250 and try to do that. But it's going to be between $1,700 and $2,000 feet roughly of what needs to be removed and repaved.
How far down?
On the south end.
Where's that road?
153rd.
How far down is 177?
It's the southern three tenths of a mile, four tenths of a mile. It's the south end by the church. That end for whatever reason is in.
Goes from the church north, from the church north about $1,700 to $2,000 feet.
It's on the hill or something.
It goes up the hill, the north end of the repair would be at the top of the hill.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As, as, as we look in the projects approved in previous, I mentioned it one time before. You don't see District 2 in the nowhere. So I'm glad, I'm glad see the road paved.
We appreciate it.
There's some things that happen in District 2, the streets, that probably even. But I, you know, I agree, I just want to throw that out there. I agree that, that, you know, all these projects that got on there, they really look good. It's good to go through the news, Mr. Harrison, like that. And I agree with Commissioner Land, trying to save money. Let the county do whatever they can do, you know, the base, build the base and like get it done. And I want to say this, I want to use this to my compliments and then to put some good out there. You carry mine and I say, you go about completing. Thank you for, for doing a good job, and those guys did a good job. When I say come to our workers, county workers out there, I should be saying that very, that very, look at that. Our county workers, they go over to the young, I saw them at 1250. They're doing that digging and carrying that dirt and all that other stuff out. And they've done a great job. Thanks to you for, and those guys got me there.
Yes, thank you. They work hard, all of you. So, Mr. Chairman, I just need to nod one way or the other. If you're okay with my proposal down here on the balance of the funding of 250 and on the rough schedule that I put together. Has she going to change anything?
Yeah, we're, we're.
Tab 3?
I'm good with it.
Tab 3 actually.
Anybody else good with this before we move on?
I'm ready to get on into 2023 with some more of this road.
We're just running on line, Commissioner.
I see that. Well, the biggest thing, I think, I mean, money is obviously a big thing, but what I've noticed with some of these chip seal roads and just like what we're trying to do, we're trying to save as much money as we can by having our folks do it. They can only do so much.
Right.
Which is unfortunate. I don't know where you want to look at it, but we're just going to do what we're going to do.
Well, and to add to that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hale, you know, by knocking out some of these shorter dead end chip.
It's been a lot of ideas.
Dirt roads that come from some far graders having run out there and getting, it's only a quarter mile long and there's a lot of people that live on them. And we're, we're slowly knocking, even the longer ones, you're slowly knocking out grader work that, you know, that allows the future.
It allows those guys to sail longer, more important roads and projects.
Yeah, we've done, in fact, Commissioner Hale has never gotten much funding in chip seal work because he, he's, but he's had a, a very commendable objective though. And that was to knock out lots of little tiny roads that kept our graders tied up. A lot of those close to town. So we've started focusing on trying to, over the years, eliminate as many of these little tiny short roads, particularly around the city, so that those graders can be freaked out to stay out there on those long roads. And Commissioner White's district. But he's got all the long roads down there.
And the most.
All, all of them, and most of them. No, really, the, the short roads take a lot of time for those grader operators and, you know, we have people complaining that one of these graders getting into these little tiny roads and trying to turn around, there's no one to do it. So it's just a constant challenge, but it's nice when we can knock it out and free those large machines up to stay on the longer roads. Tab 3 is actually, again, just a, a repeat of what I went over on that proposal at the bottom of the previous spreadsheet. Again, District 1 just taking the, you know, pointing out that I'm going to need to bid this. I'd like to do the task order. I'm convinced that more commercial activity is going to be out there and that we need more formidable road surface. So I would like to go ahead and ask for a task order and then let's prepare that for a bid and see if we can get a decent number on dating 68 Terrace. District 3, again, we've spoken of the balance of funding from the repairs on 250 going to 177th Road and 155th Lane Loop. And then District 5, Mr. Chairman, I actually had talked to you about allowing me to put this on here. I was going to suggest that we chip seal that. This is a small section that a lot of you are probably familiar with. Are you turning that word schooler, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. We were asked to turn that up to 100 degrees to make it medium shorter, but.
It's worth it.
If you want to turn it down on that, we get finished here. District 5 though, this, this little section of road is, if you know where Gwen's Packing House is, Commissioner? If you turn it off, off 129, it's 170th Terrace, but you turn off there and it's a dust bowl. They typically roll it across 129 if they're coming out there with trucks. It goes straight into the community center, the basketball court. And I've seen kids out there trying to play basketball, sucking that dust up, it's just terrible. So it's a very small section. My recommendation now though, after taking a close look at it, is that we just go ahead and asphalt that. It's a very small section, we could box that and do the base ourselves. And just asphalt that small section that just gets to like the community center. And do some substantive turnouts there and going back toward the packing house and toward the church. And the, I think there are a couple of residential homes out there. So that's an estimate of $20,000 for that. And again, this is a mid-year proposal. We haven't very often done mid-year proposals. We usually wait till the end to see what happened, but we're far enough along now with some of these things. And our discussions with the engineers know about where we're going to stand going forward. So I just need to know what the board's pleasure is on the proposals. And that's, again, leading toward 2023, projected this.
On the 2022 is a 8.6.
I'm okay with that.
If they're right here, I agree. 8.6.
Okay.
Moving along.
All right. Behind tab 4, you've got road projects.
Mr. Chairman, does he need a, you want to do a task order for that 68? Do you need a motion in front?
I, I bring that back to you. I, I have a task order. But I'll, I'll bring you a task order for 68 and we'll just go through that typical exercise. This is the schedule that changed quite a bit. So that's why I had to come in here and give you updated packets from what we got here today. And District 1, these again are proposed road projects for 2023. Again, I'll just explain that we typically ask the board to agree on a list of roads. And then these numbers of roads will show up later in your budget workshops and it'll just make it much easier for us to track what's been approved. I also want to point something out now because I think recently we've experienced some of this that needs to be addressed. It's one thing for the board to approve a list and we bring it back and then we approve it in the budget workshops and then we talk about these things. Unfortunately, there are people in the community that often think that we're going to be out there in their neighborhood the next day. And it just doesn't work that way. We are trying to complete as much as we can in a year. If we were talking about FDOT's approach to these road projects, all of you know that they go on a five-year plan. And it's usually five years before they have the money set aside for us to begin the process. And it can take another year trying to get the road done. What we are trying to do is get a list approved, doing as much of it as we can, and over the next 12 months. And like I pointed out, 153rd is one that is going to roll over into the next fiscal year. But we'll do as much as we can and we're really taking on quite a bit. So I'm just pointing that out publicly now because, Commissioners, you'll take it on the chin later when someone's calling saying, why aren't your people here? You know, I know that that road project got approved, I know the funding was approved, and it's been six months and you're not here yet. Why aren't you here? Clearly, it's because we can't start all those things at one time. But they'll stay on the list until they do get done. And I just thought it was fair to point that out now. In District 1, we've got a couple of different portions of railway street. And then you've got Oakwood Forest, this little subdivision, but again, a lot of those little short streets out there, they used to be asphalt. Now they look a lot like what they call asphalt in a third world country. A lot of potholes and patches and cracks and asphalt's just crumbling. And it needs to be replaced, so we put a number in there for that. So that's what you have for District 1. And District 3, all of these roads are out in the vicinity of Downing Park. Again, these are short unpaid roads. Some of them are even dead end roads. Some of them are small loops that tie back into 136. So you've got five of those small projects. District 4, this is a project that probably going to have to do in phases. We, we approached it that way. So 97th Road would be a Phase 1 of chip seal. And then those other small roads, years ago when we did work in Welburn, we told people out there that we would be back and we did not made it back. But those are three small unpaid roads that are in Welburn. And then District 5, you've got 81st Road and 113th Road. So those are the projects that we currently have proposed for next year with a total of $913,400. And I, I hope that we didn't overlook anyone's project. I, I'm going to point something out to you, probably now is as good a time as any pointed out. Commissioners, I had, you know, your packets previously, Hughes Road, there's a section of Hughes Road. There's a section of Hughes Road that probably most of you are familiar with, it's a narrow section. And it's quite long, but that needs to be lighted at some point. I think it's a safety issue that needs to be done. I didn't list that under, uh, districts. And one of the reasons for that is that I wanna talk to DOT and I wanna check on some of this infrastructure funding that we all keep hearing about coming out of the federal government and see if they can come up with sources of funding to go in there and light that, uh, section of Hughes Road that isn't as white as the rest of it. The engineer's estimate is about three quarters of a million dollars. Seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to lighten it and it's quite a lengthy project. Um, so while it isn't in that section that we just covered, um, I kept it in the tab on my notebook because I'm planning to revisit that and try to find some funding to see if we can get that done. Just wanted to point that out to you.
Mr. Harris, uh, look at this chart, left out District Two and District Four. On this chart.
Really?
On my paperwork.
Were you looking at the right chart?
I believe so.
Behind tab four?
Yes, sir.
Well, District Two, um, was left out because we don't have any roads in District Two. Now, what we have there, we're gonna put, Commissioner Fleming and I, we're gonna put, uh, the Douglas Center down there. He was gonna ask for some funding for that since he doesn't have any roads, but, um, you really don't have anything down there for District Four?
Uh-uh.
Oh, not much. Okay. Okay. I was wondering if there was something missing.
I'm being serious on the tab.
Um, okay, I'm with you now. You're right, um, you don't have much in there, um, on that tab. Yours is the smallest amount on that tab.
The Oakwood Forest, why is that one, are we chip sealing there or are we?
No, it would be a repaid, we'd strip that asphalt and repay that. That's what it's gonna require, it's in.
It's too large of a job for our, our guys to do.
Well. I believe it probably is. Here, here's one thing that I would, one thing I run into on some of these asphalt roads, and in fact, ran into this on sixty-eighth in my conversations with the engineers, we don't have a mixer, um, a large mixer for, you can actually mix what's existing out there today and then you use that material as part of your base. Uh, we don't have a mixer and I don't wanna recommend that we buy one anytime soon, it's probably over half a million dollars. So in the alternative, that number represents a bid number right now, they have a company coming that has that equipment and reasphalt that little subdivision. It's got, I think there are four, four little roads plus the entrance going back out to, uh, Bois Ranch Route, seven ninety-five.
Would the chips in, and I know we talked about the chips, uh, wouldn't be a doable.
We could chip seal it. I, I don't know what the sentiments of the public would be if we go in and take out an asphalt road and come back to the chip seal.
Well, they're in a, I don't think they're chip sealed.
I'd say there's a road there.
Well.
It's, it's gone.
It is gone. It, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, if board wants to go in there, set it up as a chip seal project, we can certainly do that. We can use our.
I wouldn't see that price compared to that. You'd like to chip seal.
Well, the chip seal, if we perform the work for the chip seal, then it's gonna be a whole lot cheaper to do that than it would be for asphalt because this is a bid with everyone mixed that product, uh, they would do the base, they would do the asphalt, they would do it all, all the shoulder work and everything. If we chip seal it, we would go in there and strip off the asphalt, work with the bases there, add line rock, do the shoulder work and everything ourselves. And I promise you, it'll be a lot cheaper, um, at this number. So if that's what the board's pleasure is, we can set it up that way. And I guarantee you, they'd be better off with what, with what they have today.
I truly agree with that and over the last ten, fifteen years.
Right.
And they've been dealing with what they're having to deal with the last ten, fifteen years, and I think it would welcome. Be even with that now.
Yeah, I would say that, uh, probably less than a quarter of that expense, that's four hundred four thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, so probably a hundred thousand dollars, um, and you can do it all with the chip seal. If the county performs the work and contracts the chip seal.
That would help me. Well, yeah, well, I wouldn't plan on doing that, I would just find some other.
You would find another road.
Yeah, I would just have another road.
Well, do we got another eighty laying around to get District Four up to an average between three and five?
An hour and a half.
I think fair is fair.
Well, if we, if we're able to do that chip seal in there, that's gonna, I think that's gonna be a lot, we could all share.
Well, we gotta figure out when the nine thirteen comes on altogether.
Where are we gonna cut shares from? Where, where are we normally pulling the funds for these roads from?
Well, typically what'll happen is we'll go through your first day of your budget workshop and then you'll have a much better idea where we're, where we stand. And, you know, we are having this discussion, and so all of those other conversations we're gonna have very near term on every other service that we're providing throughout the county and constitutional offices, so, uh, by the end of your first day and as you start your second day of budget workshops, you'll have an idea where you stand and what you can afford to put into these road projects and any other projects that the county's been contemplating, undertaking and just hasn't had an opportunity.
Well, that ninety-seventh road is a portion that says for you, Commissioner Stoeck. I mean, would you wanna add on to that or?
I mean, I looked at a couple of different things, but there again, it's hard to say what, what we're gonna have. I mean, I realize we'll have a good business, but I don't know that we have every bit of it, so we'd all, I don't think.
So do we just wanna just go with the nine hundred and thirteen thousand for our bill and look at it closer, closer time? Is that what we wanna do?
Well, here's, here's what I would do, if you, if you wanna decide now that, um, that Oakwood Forest is gonna be chip sealed, that would help me because I've got the measurements and I can run the numbers on that.
I would prefer that.
Okay.
Question, I mean, you know, just, I'm a Republican, I'm a people that live, I would have to say this, nothing, I'm putting a lesser road out there. I mean, that stuff we've seen is pretty, really the one, one of your places. How much traffic do on that?
Hard on law enforcement.
It's a little good, I'm surprised.
It holds up well, and surprisingly, it took me years to convince the Commissioner to let us use that, but it's, I think it's gonna serve us well over time.
Well, and, and then that subdivision's low speed, light vehicles, I mean, it's always a one way in, one way out.
Low speed, if you're driving, you got kids on bikes.
Yeah, I mean, you got passenger vehicles and, you know, ten, fifteen mile an hour speed limits inside there, so I don't know why chips would.
Well, if you say that change, you wanna pretty much guarantee that this is gonna be with the.
Exactly.
If you pull that out, um, I'll run the numbers on the chip seal, but I'm, I'm just gonna give you an example. Let, let's just say that we spent a hundred and, if we said a hundred and fifty, I think that would be a high number on Oakwood Forest. So that leaves you two hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you took the two fifty and you said, okay, we're gonna use eighty-five of that and put it in District Four and add to what's already there. That would put you on.
Pretty easy.
Three of you pretty close.
Yeah.
If you wanna do that.
I'd be willing to do that.
I'd be with that.
Okay, then Oakwood Forest, we're gonna, I'm gonna do an estimate at a hundred and fifty. And then we'll put eighty-five with District Four and then that'll still reduce our bottom line, we'll come in at less than nine hundred.
Appreciate it. It's a loaded one, please.
And that, oh, that difference, actually, all of this comes out of the sheriff's budget, correct?
What is it? I was joking here. Mr. Harris, are we, are we done with that?
Yes, sir. Um, I think we're finished with that. Now, if you hold on to these notebooks as we go forward, each year, we're gonna be prepared to give you new ones, but the plan is just continue to add these over time. You do have four additional items, yes, sir.
I don't think we have a sheet.
We don't have.
Is there anybody who can, you know, I have a sheet for the additional. I don't know.
Chad, didn't you give theirs that?
I don't think.
Additional items?
You have to fire me, sorry.
You didn't give them that?
I did to the public.
Oh. Well, we just need some volunteers to turn them over.
I'll leave. Fucking beret, boy.
Church.
That's kind of timber territory, boy.
All right.
You want that?
Yeah, we just hold it. We need to print some money for Eric.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, and by the way, if you don't mind, I'd like to probably do number two last, it may take longer. It probably just wasn't safe.
It was on seventy-four when I came in, I moved down to seventy when I walked in. It feels like this gets hotter the year that we move. Probably comes from getting stirred up, so.
Okay, um.
Ready to move on?
Everybody has this now?
Yes, sir.
Number one here was, uh, our yield rate with, uh, Florida Blue is a four percent increase of the current rate. They actually use the, um, I'm gonna say this in layman's terms, they, they look at everything they spend over prior twelve months when they establish these rates. Um, and that's what all these companies do. So we have experienced reductions in the past and then we've experienced increases in the past. Given the current climate, this appeared to be a fairly modest increase over the current year. The reason that it needs to come to you now is that we're preparing budget worksheets and Mr. Gentry is sending out all of the worksheets for payroll and that insurance cost shows on there, uh, like, you know, you'll know, you'll see that later in your budget worksheets and the workshops. But I just need to know if the board agrees on renewing again with Florida Blue.
You need a motion or just?
I'll need a motion.
Question by Commissioner Lee, second by Christopher Slapman, all in favor, I? All in both same side, where should we hear it? Out of number three.
Mr. Chairman, um, some of you may be aware, we have traffic accident, one of our dump truck drivers was involved in. Um, I think that, that many of us have the opinion that he was not at fault, albeit he got written up. Clearly, he had signals on, witnesses say he had signals on, he was trying to make a return in a dump truck on Highway twenty-seven. Someone behind the semi that was by him was traveling at a high rate of speed and came around all of them and made contact with in front of his truck, um, primarily the front bumper. Uh, we've done extensive investigation, we've got video footage and drone footage and measurements and all types of things. This is a case where I would ask the board to allow us to utilize the services of legal counsel to defend our employee in this particular case. Uh, the insurance, our insurance company's gonna be handling the damages plain, uh, regardless. But, um, in my most recent conversation with them, uh, they were not going to, they were prepared to handle the damages on behalf of the county, but they weren't prepared to handle the defense of the county employee and I'm making an appeal to the board to allow us to help either have Mr. Prabhat or have Mr. Prabhat, cure the services of the council that specializes in that and let's try to take care of this situation.
I would need to have a question, Mr. Prabhat?
No, typically, the, the, the employee will go get, you know, counsel and we were really on the back end, kind of reimbursing. But from, you know, this standpoint, I think we're looking at assuring, you know, the employee that were behind him and we're gonna take care of this cost for him.
Well, I guess my question would be, is there a reason that we can't do an alternative approach and go ahead and procure the services of someone to represent another state?
No, there's not, uh, not reason to not do that, I'm just saying what was typical.
I would ask the board to consider to go ahead and participate, I'm not sure that our employees or the positions go out and procure the services of anyone in this case.
Well, I watched the video on, um, Mr. Lee Hacks had a video, I haven't had a video from the church down there and, uh, it looks to me like it was totally laid his off from driving the car. So I don't know, I really don't see it, don't see it as his fault and I don't think pretty much for his, but I'm not sure, so. But I think it's worth pursuing.
And one of the things that you, that the board may consider is, you know, because the employee was acting within the scope of this employment, um, if he's found guilty on the ticket, you know, part of that, it can be utilized, you know, on the other side, on the civil side, you know, to be able, uh, to show negligence on the, on the part of the county, uh, in case something happens down the future. So this is kinda holding it up, you know, holding up our end of the deal there.
This is a set precedent where we gotta hire all your reverend employees if something goes wrong, is it?
In all the years I've been here, this is the first time that I've looked at a situation like this and felt like we need to step up and try to do something. And I've seen the same video that you saw.
Yes, sir.
And I'm very familiar with witness testimony and everything else and, um, and it's just a case where I think we need to understand how this employee in this case.
Any other discussion on this? Do you have any opinions?
I'm not probably.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, second. Motion by Commissioner Slapman, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, I? All in both same side. Here's, I don't know.
Out of number four, Mr. Chairman, uh, is consideration of the donation agreement from one of Mr. Berman's companies out there off of Palm Street. Um, several months ago, uh, back before October, we approved the lease for the Guardian, uh, Ad Liden program. Uh, our county is a responsible program, you know, to handle all of those leases all the way around. And we approved the lease, uh, uh, for their building over in the Live Oak Commons building over there. Uh, that particular company is actually, uh, entitled Live Oak Investments fourteen fifteen LLC. Well, since they've been occupying the building over there, Mr. Berman has been providing space for the Guardian Ad Liden to be able to handle all the supplies for all the kids that come in and, and the work that they're doing over there. But he has been providing it at Live Oak Commons, he's been providing it over at those warehouses that are over on, uh, Palm Street. So what, uh, what he is requesting now is to go ahead and formalize the agreement, uh, you know, provide that space. And that's what I have before you right here. The, the agreement is a typical, uh, donated space agreement, uh, there is no cost for the leased space to the county. At this time, uh, it'll only be, you know, whatever the utilities are. And in speaking with the folks at Guardian Ad Liden, under the budget, uh, that they had submitted last year and was already approved, there won't be any additional cost, uh, as a budget item for this year. So, um, and the other, the other thing is because it's a space that's out there and typically, you know, when we, you rent a space like that, you know, it could fall under the liability insurance program, you know, of whoever would be, you know, leasing the, the thing and I wanna make sure. sure that we are listing it on our, the thing with Mr. Eldonston for, as part of our properties. The last thing is that because it would be a donation, there may be some benefit on behalf of Mr. Berman and his Live Oak Investments one forty, to get a receipt from the county, you know, for a fair market value rent, you know, for that, for his business. So, I'd ask you to approve the agreement, and I put in there to approve the agreement not pro time, going back to October first, which is when we started the other lease, so, just to formalize that.
Any discussion, or have a motion approved? Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, all opposed, same sign. Where's your period?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number two. Discuss the possible board action permitting with Swan River Water Management District, Mr. Lee, right?
Oh, well, you imagine, seven more, seven more, seven freezes, pleasure, right? It was a pleasure to say to you tonight, really, and once y'all go back to the board, I thank you, thanks, how government should work. Thank y'all makes a wise decision, like, oh, good for you, once you tore into that pavement, you're going to find totally substandard play, everything out of this thing, and so, we've come back for a change, going with another $200,000, so, well, that was really good that y'all worked together, and that. And what I'm here about is that very same thing. We got a lot of growth coming to this county, a lot of good things fixing to happen, and some of the projects that y'all are talking tonight are totally intermingled with what we're here talking about. I've talked to several of y'all about some of the issues and problems that have happened. Most of y'all are familiar with the project out here in front of us, myself and Dennis Music own this property. The city used to be a great engine, in a river, and I can't tell you the change that the city has made, and how they've stepped up, and how Mr. Curtis is really, every person that we send there that wants information, just like Ronald and I, is overly helpful, that's what everyone's supposed to be, accountable to the people. And these developers that we send in, Mr. Curtis gives them a timeframe, he tells them what, what we need, not one of them have come back to me and said the city's been anything to help us, because I don't say anything about our property going down. But we're all running into an issue, for twenty years, we've had a great working relationship with the county. The proof is what you seek out there, our publics are sitting out, very few of you remember when we bought the property, with a forty-foot-deep hole out in the public access. We have permission from water management to come out on site, we displaced the order to other drainage areas, we moved and filled that up, sixteen million dollar project sitting there now, because water management workers. Put back on the tax notice, created all these jobs and taxable income, same thing with Lowe's, water's been displaced, but the benefit that we have out there, Lord Rock left that place as a disaster, where they didn't have to reclaim it. Quit mining because the new lease confirmation office has come in, we worked really hard at reclaiming this property. The bypass road, that was a really big thing, county stepped up and helped, and now, I want you to look now, because this bypass is there in its red light, the taxable income that this county plus the city has now, everything out there that's because of government stepping up and helping us when we need it. Reason I'm here tonight, water management was totally out of control, not water management per se, when it poured, when it managed. We all love to share the point, we all got friends there, and I assure you, every now and then, you'll get an overzealous entity, that Sam Rump has called in his office, tune him up, and say, "We don't do things this way, we, we do it our way, we serve the people, not the other way around." I wish Greg Bailey was here tonight, that we could sit here and give you the details of what's been going on. Everybody knows that project, on the side by Lowe's, there's eighty-six acre hole, over eighty-foot deep, all right? Or it goes there naturally anyway, the bypass road, see the big ditch drains into it, so we handle that quarter of it. On my side, my hole average is thirty-eight fifty, it's about thirty foot below one twenty-nine. Water management has the past week told me I needed an overflow structure in my hole, I'm just asking y'all, where's the water going to go? So, my wife asked me, why I was so livid when I got this RIA, this is the fourth, fourth RIA by Ashley. What RIA is, is a request for additional information, there is no limit of how many water management can send, DP, if you permit no landfill, anything else is allowed to send you one RIA, all right? So, what this means is, when you get an overzealous, authoritative person like Ashley, she'll beat you to death with RIA, all right? So, I'm going to give y'all some examples. Y'all know that Greg Bailey is y'all's engineer, as well as Jasper, Cross City, Mayo, everywhere around, so, everybody thinks he's pretty confident, everybody with Ashley, all right? He called me this week, he lived it, I set up a meeting, we go out there to word the director, I talked with y'all several times, we go down, look in the hole. Before we get to this point, I'm asked to do drilling, standard retention pond is like a one-acre pond, everybody knows, like, if Dollar Tree, they got a one-acre pond, you're supposed to do one drilling per pond, per acre. My pond's a twenty-seven acre pond, Dennis's is an eighty-six acre pond. Now, that don't sound like too much, but each one of these drillings you do is a thousand dollars, so, we present water management to Ashley, she's took over from Leroy now, that we do eight holes instead of twenty-seven. The rules says one per acre, we already know what's there, we already know what type of material we did, and we removed it, we done everything. So, I bite the bullet, do twenty-seven drilling, what does it show? I was twenty-seven, exactly like. Now, what the community needs to know is that we're holding three times the water of every other district in the state of Florida, and this is staff that has put this in, not law, not state law, everybody goes to Jacksonville, Uly, Callahan, that's a swamp. We're holding three times the water, so, my hole has to hold thirty-two inches of rain, thirty-two inches of rain, so that's deadly plus six inches, all right? Still won't come out of my hole, but we're taking up more land and more land. Y'all talk about paving sixty-eight acres today, everybody knows that property in front of our wall. Is there a more desirable piece of property in this county? Best location, there is, for this property, best location. I know of two developers who's had a contract on that, and because of water management requiring us to hold the money, I mean, to hold the amount of water that we're holding over every other district, they back out. You know what the requirements on that thirty-eight acres is, I'll tell the public tonight, because we have a problem in Swan County with water management. The rules of that is, is that they'll have a seventeen-acre retention pond, twelve foot deep, to be able to develop the other twenty acres. Now, does anybody in the public understand what it costs to build a seventeen-acre pond ten foot deep? At today's diesel prices, you're probably about three million dollars, that piece of property is for sale for four million dollars right now. So, a man's going to go in there and pay four million dollars, lose half his property, and dig a three-million-dollar pond. So, how many of developers is just going to run up and sign up for that? So, why is that best piece of property in my book still sitting there? I just told you, water management, but the option, if there's a ditch running right down the side of it, the option is that there's a huge hole of water management left at Dennis Music now, and the option is that man can develop all thirty-eight acres and send the water to Dennis, but yet, we're having trouble getting permits. Is anybody doubt that every port of my land already drains to my hole? So, it's all clay, they're considering it all impertuse, there's nothing changing, but I'm having the required to hold thirty-two inches of rain, all right? The minimum piece of property that I've sold out there is a hundred thousand dollars, so if you give up an extra thirteen acres of property, how much money would it cost the county now? How much money would it cost me personally, and how much would it cost the county? Popeyes is now on the road for like three million dollars. Daryl Fudge Building is sitting on site after boat, we're talking about a three-point-eight million dollar project, y'all are holding it up, water management, all right? Do we know that Highway fifty-five restoration is coming? I don't know if y'all know it, you know why they enclosed? Water management, all right? Not that the water is not going there already, it's just I don't have the permit, but yet, just like the drilling, I spent the money. Will give you more information, because I'm finally to the point that I'm just absolutely livid. Lidor is one that establishes elevations all over the county, everywhere, what everybody uses, if you want to buy a piece of property, go to Lidor, every engineer uses it, but yet, they can determine John Strayer's elevation of his property, all the property all the way around me, but then said that I couldn't use Lidor for my hole, that I had to have my own topo survey. This is an RIA a year into my project, a year into my project, so I'm mad, I go to water management, talk to the director, why did I have to do this? Y'all determined Lidor to determine that I have a hole, so, cost me twelve thousand more dollars. So, we hire a company, they fly, they give us a detailed topographical survey, and Tori and him turn it in, she kicks it back because it has too many lines, she can't read it. Well, how many lines is on a vertical wall, y'all? How do you determine it? Oh, so she can't read it, and she can't read the firm, so she requests that she could do as many RIAs as she wanted, all right? Now, y'all need to understand the process of time of kicking this down the road, we got all these projects sitting here waiting, every single one. I have over twenty-five million dollars worth of projects trying to come to Swan County right now, that Ashley is holding up herself, and that ain't, that I ain't been firing under the director, I went to board members, I be dead with, I promise y'all, no stone unturned. I've been to the city council, I've done the same exact thing with them, all right? I'll eventually get my permit, but this economy is so volatile right now, if one of you are businessmen, and you keep getting one bill after another, and one bill after another, and this fuel keeps going, and build costs keeps going, how long before you just say, "Think I'll just can Highway fifty-five"? Just can that project, we can't work it, we're that volatile right now, but yet Highway fifty-five is thirty more jobs to Swan County, all right? Good Good Car Wash is coming, Tire Kingdom is coming, two more, possibly Chick-fil-A, how many jobs are we looking at? I'm taking this water anyway. And so, what I'm asking the board is to write a letter to water management, demanding that why, we've talked to every board member, why we're holding three times the water that every other district is, back-to-back storms, all right? I'm getting credit for zero percolation out there, it's just like the water's going in a paved toe, all right? We all know that we get some percolation even if we got clay. I'm, I'm beyond aggravated, I'm beyond every time I turn around, we can't get a permit, but yet, it's twenty more thousand, or fifteen more thousand, I want to tell you another project. Behind Agro, down over Milton Smith, I could read y'all his text tonight, had a permit for that, to build a house, thirty-eight more houses, permit's lapse. Greg calls him, Milton calls him, "Hey, we got to do something. Water drains to where Dennis Music already there, already been permitted, whole entire project already done, just another phase, Greg says she want renewed permit, she want begging bill. He's got to go in there and do an environmental study, he's got to do a weapons study, he's got to do a redesign, he's got, where's the water going now? It's going the same place it's going right now, it's going to Dennis Music hole, but I could read y'all the text where Milton Smith says, I probably won't tell you what he said, but he'll take his money and go elsewhere, and that piece of property can grow weeds. Thirty-eight houses pre-sold, and one lady, one lady holding it up, I'll tell you another project to show how we had a great working relationship with water management. Down over Ponds, a retirement community, a lot of y'all remember that was a pond, will of trees, just, just a tail and pond, just, just slush, all right? Took water management out there, and we told them what we wanted to do, part of this project. They stood out there, they looked at the big clay hill, y'all remember all the big clay hill out there? Eighty thousand yards, they give us a permit to do away with the pond, put eighty thousand yards in it, now we got a available piece of our property on this side, we got a available piece on that. In thirty minutes, we stood out there, we all agreed on what had to be done, the forenters, they let Greg Bailey handle it, they got a super permit, water management was happy, we was happy, we built the project, we reserved the water on the property, we done everything we're supposed to do, we can't do that anymore, y'all. Now, it's affecting me, but we're going, we're going to make it, but what is affecting is these jobs and these taxable businesses that is coming, that everything is lined up to come, and one overzealous person is beating us to death. Now, I refuse to be done on that, now, I'm not, I've, I've spent, and spent, I talked with Larry Sessions this morning, he told me to tell y'all what I had spent. This project, doing this pond started out at about thirty-five thousand, I'm over a hundred fifty thousand now. Greg can't even give a developer a price, Dennis Music is going around her and going directly to the board to get his permit, or we can get a variance. I'm so far into it, I can't do that. So, what I'm asking the board is not only that we write them a letter, find out why we're taking twice the water, why we're holding up the growth, I want this letter to go to the governor, because the governor directly controls water management's board, all right? Water management's board needs to understand that if they have a director that cannot handle his staff, and cannot get these permits out, they need to understand, just like y'all have demonstrated tonight, you work for the people, we don't work for you, all right? You're here to serve us, and we're here to help you. Now, we're helping, but now it's time that y'all help us, and let's get these developers that coming, and not one power-hungry person, and I'm singling her out, because, as Tori would tell you tonight, every RIA, I asked the director directly this week, "How long will this take? These people need to build right now, how long will this take?" So, I was being facetious, basically, I said, "Ashley, do you have a big chalkboard on your wall that says Don Wayne Wright at the top of your list, most important?" And she said, "Oh, no, no, that ain't the way to do it. Our computer tells us when our thirty days is coming up, and we make sure that we read it within the thirty days, if we got any questions, we have to send it back to you on the thirtieth day." Tori can sit here and tell, I have got a RIA at six-thirty on the thirtieth day, if y'all don't think that's kicking the can down the road and stopping businesses, but yet, they told me I could pay a thousand extra dollars, and I could have a three-day review. Now, what developer would pay a thousand dollars, but you see my point? You know, I'm doing my part, I took a wasteful piece of property, and I've stayed out there for twenty years, kept my butt on a bulldozer, and I've bought diesel, and bought diesel, and I've done, and this community has been great for me, but I have also worked for this community, I'm trying to bring jobs here, I'm trying to bring development here, and I'm tired of one person beating me to death, and so, I'm going to the governor, I'm going to every congressman, every senator, I promise you, Don Wayne Wright's going to get his permit, but what about the next person trying to get a permit that don't have the influence or the attachments to people that I do, or that don't have the development Or that don't have a development that is so crucial to life? What about Dennis Music fixing to lose three hundred houses? A developer will become high lose, three hundred houses. Who want to purchase the property right now to bring three hundred houses? What about Milton Smith, thirty-eight houses? What about Don Wainwright's thirty million dollars worth of businesses that I can lay the paperwork right here? And we have one person holding it up. So I would appreciate a call to the director. I would appreciate a certified letter to Water Management, to the board members, and also a send it to the governor. Because not everybody has the ability to do what I'm doing. What about the little man that can't get his thing? I can tell you business after business after business. Daniel Krabs told me it is decimating the construction in Lake City. One person, because of all the power. Water Management has always worked with us. I appreciate your time.
Uh, before you leave, Mr. Wainwright, what is the regulations as far as our Water Management District versus the other? In other words, I've sat in all these meetings, I've been to a couple of those Water Management meetings and I thought that we pretty much have this going in the right direction.
Yeah. I feel that we are going in the right direction. She stood up and gave a presentation in the last board member meeting with the changes that Greg Bailey, other engineers presented. That they get us on a level playing field with Dubon or St. John's or West Florida and we all get on a level playing field and we all same. But then she misrepresented the information, said how devastating it would be, how we would flood all these places out. And everybody knows my project. Is my and Dennis Music's property going to flood anybody? Or is everybody's water coming to us? Does everybody remember when they had to come? What happened to the water? Everybody's calling me and Dennis, can we pump to the hole? Can we pump to the hole? Uh, Oakwood Forest, y'all talking about that? They was pumping water across seven ninety-five to my home. And so if we can't put water in, why should we let anybody else? And my issue when I really had enough is when I was told that I had to put an overflow thirty-eight foot below anything else around here. I mean, we just use no common sense in this because the rule said, okay, well, if the rule says that, we're after, like you said, we're after the rule changes right now. Now, they're fighting it left and right, the staff is. But then that's where the people step up and say, you work for us, we don't work for you. You can't stop development here. Now, we need, we all have a job to do. I think Water Management has a great job to do, but I don't think one person controls Water Management.
Well, just so the public understands, and I said on these meetings, and I don't remember the correct terminology on all of it, but we're required in this Water Management District, I believe it is, is a hundred-year flood for how long? Do they, how long? Back to back, right? But I mean, that's not consistent with everybody else in the state, is it?
Definitely.
Yeah.
And so what it does for the public's understanding, the piece of property that Mr. Swanson owns in front of Walmart, it totally makes the very best location in Live Oak that anything could come. It makes that property totally undeveloped. So that property will sit there another twenty years unless we change these rules. Now, does that affect me? No. But it does affect me because look at all the jobs that comes that we all work for.
Well, not only does it, the jobs, the tax revenue for the county and Walmart for that fact, tax revenue for Water Management.
That's right. Their budget comes from projects like ours. Do you know that we have the lowest budget of all districts in the whole entire state? Wonder why?
Well, and just to be clear, it's not this county. I've heard of projects getting hooked down in Taylor County, Columbia County, Dixie County.
And I think if you've done the research on that, I think you'll find the same lady's name on everyone up there. And it's a powerful thing right now. And you know what? What we have to look at too is how do we? I've tried to handle this nicely. You get to a point that, okay, kick that can down the road another thirty days and Mr. Futch is raising sand and he's not a new building, sitting there in the dealership. Now, is any of y'all doubting that where you look at that Cabota dealership going there? Are any of y'all doubting that that water is automatically flowing to where we're trying to permit it right there? Every bit, one hundred percent. But yet, we can't get a permit to flow that water there. And I mean, it makes no sense. But it's past the point now, squeaky wheel gets the grease. Greg Bailey has specifically asked me, come to every one of y'all, go to every board member. And I said, I have been to, I have eaten dinner with five board members now. And all five of them are looking at making the changes that we're talking about. But this RIA is a crucial thing because she can take, well, Donald had a rocket go around me. Oh, I do. Because she works for the director. So if I called the director, he works for us, he works for these people right here. And so then she can get mad at me, beat Greg to death with additional information. You know who it's costing? It's costing my checkbook, but it's costing every one of these developments from coming. And so y'all were in a great position right now, but one of the very vulnerable position went to economy. And time is of the essence because if you look at it this way, they secure a lease fee. So in other words, Highway fifty-five don't own the building, they own the person leasing it. So they've got these numbers run. We know that construction numbers are going up every day. Interest rates start changing two weeks ago. All right? So now, what if they throw the lease out there and the lease is fifteen hundred dollars more a month? Because you've been held up six months. So now this tenant can say, our lease is too high, we might have to back out. You know, that's what's gonna happen. And so in the end, dang, we'll get the permit, but we may lose some of this stuff in the process. And so I don't want to lose Milton Smith's thirty-eight houses up there. And it's the most important house to those thirty-eight people who's going back and the construction and the money that's gonna be spent here in our town. And so I'm here tonight pleading my case. I pleaded at the city the other day. If I go to the governor, I'm gonna plead it to him. Y'all know there is no quitting me. And so we're gonna get this accomplished. But it would be nice if the commission, as one of the city councils stepped up and said, hey, we see some issues here.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flynn.
Um, no, I know you had some conversations. Thank you, appreciate every single thing that you've done for this county. At one point, you know, was this, oh, not today. You put some good work in there. I know you told the commission, you know, how can we really help? Do you, Chairman, do you write a letter, have a road, a consent, a board committee? That's what you're asking?
Yes, sir. And I would ask every commissioner to pick up the phone and call the director and say, is what Mr. Wainwright saying true? Call Greg Bailey. Every one of y'all know it, you deal with him all the time, he's engineering all your road. Call him and ask him if I've told him once, one even exaggerated one thing.
Already done.
Have I exaggerated any of that? There's a real problem. And the director needs to understand he controls his staff.
Anybody got a question? To be fair, is anybody here from the Water Management District?
Yes, sir.
Name of the address for me.
So my name is Ben Glass. I'm the legislative governor of Ferris chief for the Swan River Water Management District. I live in, well, I'll give you my work address, nine two two five County Road forty-nine, Live Oak, Florida, three two oh six oh. My personal address, ooh, I'm blanking, it's in Live Oak. Government.
Mr. Chairman.
So I do want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity to address you all tonight. I do think there has been some misrepresentations regarding some of this and I hope, Mr. Wainwright and commissioners, that I've got some good news for you tonight regarding the rules that you mentioned, Mr. Wainwright. We're taking a hard look at those. We're already starting work to evaluate what changes we can make that will be beneficial to this area. And we're looking at doing task work assignments with engineers to do that evaluation. So this is real work that is happening today. That rule changes don't happen overnight. There's a process we have to go through, we have to get them on the list. The next opportunity to update that list is in October. And the plan is to put the rules on that list then. And we're doing the work now to make sure that we have it in the best place possible for that to move as quickly as it can, once we're able to do that. In regards to some of the other issues, we have worked with Mr. Wainwright and his consultant for numerous meetings and exchanges to provide assistance in how he can meet the requirements of the rules so that the permit can be issued. Staff have gone so far as to research and consider the rule changes that Mr. Wainwright and his consultants requested. As of the last discussion with Mr. Wainwright, please correct me if this is wrong. We met with him on site, I did not personally, our executive director and our engineer, met with him on site on May ninth. Staff was advised at that time that Mr. Wainwright's consultant would be submitting new plans for the project using existing onsite features in lieu of a design that could have possible impacts in approaching or making the property. Today, we haven't received any of those updated plans. So the district, we've had a longstanding relationship with Swan County providing for economic growth while supporting resource management. We value this relationship and we definitely hope to continue it. And we are committed to getting Mr. Wainwright his permit. Are we happy to answer any questions?
I'm just gonna come at you from common sense. If the end thing here is we gonna get a permit anyway? Why ain't we doing it? I mean, I get it, we're waiting on some plans or whatever, but I mean, the end, we all know you're gonna issue a permit at some point here, but we're holding up the pile of work that's beneficial to everybody in this county. I just don't understand, I mean, government drives me crazy. I'm a private sector guy and it wears me out. But I know you got rules and things you gotta follow, but I don't know. Common sense to me is if you're gonna issue a permit anyway, that's, why don't we just go?
So to put the district, county, Mr. Wainwright, those businesses that are going there in the best position possible with their showing water, we have to meet the criteria in our rules. And that's what we're trying to do to get this permit issued.
So you're saying the rules that you have in effect now, he's having to conform to those rules until we can get them changed?
Correct. We can't strike a pen and change the rules. Staff does not have that authority. We gotta go through the rulemaking process to get them updated.
Mr. Speaker.
Man, I want to welcome you tonight. I've known you for a good while since I've been in county government. You've always guided right things by everybody's accord. What I would say, I mean, October, I mean, it's nice. That's, and I understand this is out of your hands, but we're having a discussion because you're representing. So I want to be respectful of you in that matter, but I also want you to understand our side. I feel like if it's really important that that board is bigger than this board, if we have something that we see as an emergency or is very important, we can have a meeting late that afternoon. If it's important enough, they'll be to take care of this. I feel like that that board could do the same thing. I understand you're saying that, but my point is if we get to October and we got all these facts and good and we all sit there and go through them and say, oh, we can make these changes, this change, this change, okay, we agree to make this change. Then we're gonna come out and ask people to say when they're gonna want to affect. So October, you're not gonna get us to a meeting that we can see if we want to change, make the changes. You see what I'm saying? This is where the prospection comes in. And I understand it and I'm not, trust me, I'm not taking it from Mr. Wainwright, but I've seen this in numerous cases and not just with Water Management. But my point is, as Chairman said, it's serious, it's about the well-being of Swan County, it's about bringing growth here. And if there's anything you can do on our behalf to go back and say, hey, if we can expedite this, get these changes in place and let's help continue to make a difference, that's what I'm leaving here tonight is asking that question. Just within reason, I mean, be within reason unless make something happen. People, all these people sitting here and all these people in Swan County and all around the country, they've watched things on the news every night and just get so frustrated because it's government. It's government. Those, we're here because of those people and they feel like they have no say whatsoever. And it's amazing. And it's something else if I made that difference. And I just ask you to do what you can for us.
And I'm not, I know you're just here representing, but I'm frustrated with this. Because I've been to two of those meetings already. One y'all have once a month. And I had made one, so that's three months that this is getting banged around. If I hadn't have sat through those two meetings and thought, well, we're gonna get somewhere here, you know, pretty quick. And here we are, we're still, we're still hypedness. And I don't know, it hurts my feelings to watch economic development go away. So I'm just like Commissioner Stapleton, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would ask you to go back and see if there's anything that we can do to make this happen.
Mr. Chairman.
Ben, I've known him since he was a child. I mean, his grandfather had a farm across from my family and known him forever. He does a great job what he does and I know his intentions of representing the community the best he can. There's no doubt, man. I'm not, you know that. And I'm not here to defend Mr. Wainwright. I know he's got projects going on, but I think what I'm hearing here is it's our responsibility is to defend those developments, to defend those folks that want the number thirty-eight ones. Apartment complex, I've heard of the government, I think of that nature. So, and I agree with these two, whatever you guys can do to expedite this, or emergency meeting, we do whatever has to happen. But I want to reserve nature as well, be yours job, do the right. If there's anything we can do, I do think time is of the essence on some of these projects. Whether economy or whatever, but make sure some of these things be a part of our community.
Mr. Chairman. I'll speak to it too. And Ben, I've known you a long time too, I've no means of attacking you. I'm just asking you to carry the message back as a messenger to your folks out there. I think all of us are frustrated, you know, and I'm not paying to Mr. Wainwright, but he spent a lot of time and money and energy out there and made some risk, rolled dice on a piece of property and he's right, I mean, we got a volatile economy right now and October, he might miss the boat. You know, and when's that boat gonna come back? Because it won't be in a year, it might be five, it could be ten, you know, before, you know, development. The speed of development comes back the way that it is today. The economy's slowing, the pandemic's slowing, inflation's rising, raising rates to do it. It affects our lives, just like we talked about. But you see it everywhere. I mean, you see, I look at the apartment complexes over on Silas Drive and those ones playing a small piece of property and half of it's retention pond. I mean, in dire need of, you know, a new income house around here. You see that, we only got so much of those specifics. All of them, you know, dense, high density, low density commercial, which Mr. Wainwright's talking about. And you see half of a parcel or retention pond, you're just like, gah. You know, creating urban sprawl, the water management and the retention ponds everywhere. And I would just ask, you know, respectfully, we need to respectfully ask your board to help us get on a level playing field when we got a Water Management District ASAP, you know, expedite this as fast as possible.
It's just, I don't know, it's just common sense saying to me, them ponds have been there for a long time. All that water went to them ponds forever and I don't know. I didn't just roll up there and go, we can do this, you know? That's just my point of view on it. You know, it's probably not the rule following, we need to go through, but I mean, there's some common sense plays in this at some point. I don't need to be on it. Respectfully, I'm not after you, Ben, I like you and I appreciate you coming and sharing your point, you know, representing them. And just ask you, we could speed it up.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flynn.
I would say the same thing. Actually, if you have a speed of, uh... I would say the same thing, actually, if you have the speed of, uh, let's do what your father, your grandfather, you know, who's probably around, um, yeah, I am defending Mr. Wayne Wright, 'cause their property have produced a lot of money, I live off the town. And I can't sit here and say that, I can't support, and just, when I wanna see growth, I need these jobs, and our children, my children, our children have to leave this county to go get employment somewhere else. And when they go get employment somewhere else, those jobs, they ain't gonna mark, and what are they gonna do? We need to provide our own, that's what I'm all about. I'm for growth, I am for development, I am for quality jobs, those little jobs, thirty, eighty jobs, they add up, kids go off, they ain't got no better work, they don't have anything, you know, jobs, you know, anything to do. So, yes, I'm gonna support these efforts, and what he's trying to do out here, knowing that this county spoke about jobs that, that could possibly come here, they have a great opportunity. We have, we have a good tool, I don't know, twenty-nine millimeter, seem to utilize the tool that we have to bring in quality jobs for our kids. We all appreciate if, if you can get to them, and ask them to speed up the project.
Thank you. Do you hear anything else?
Just, just, just real briefly, one of the hats I wear as the Lieutenant Government Affairs Chief is the district's home spokesman. The definition of what that does is to take any concerns like this, back to our agency, the leadership, and to our board, to see, make sure we turn over all the rocks, and make sure all, all avenues are being explored, so I, I have no issue making a commitment to, to carry your message back to them, and see what we can find out. I will say, based on what I've done so far, we're doing everything we can to get ourselves in positions, and when we get the opportunity to do the rulemaking, that we'll be ready to go.
Well, let me ask you this while you're there, and I know you probably don't build this, but maybe you can take this back. The plans you're waiting on, I'm assuming that's what we're waiting on now to finish this permit, from the engineer?
That's not, that's not understanding.
Uh, if he gets those plans there, where, where are we at then? I mean, is that?
So we-
I'm just looking for a timeframe here.
So, as long as we get those plans in, we can turn them around as quickly as possible. We can either do it in the accelerated permit review process or otherwise. But if we get those plans in, we can, we can work to make them a top priority, and get them reviewed as quickly as possible.
We do most appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Who's hers?
Ben, I don't know you. I, I appreciate emails. Let me just say, I love you. I appreciate you being here tonight. But I'm gonna say some things, I, I'm frustrated sitting here listening to this whole conversation. This is a classic case of paralysis by analysis, and it's been allowed to occur at the Water Management District. I've attended the meetings that the chairman has attended, and I think we both went there hopeful, hopeful, that all those voices that got up and spoke in that meeting over there at Water Management were not falling on deaf ears, but that something was actually going to happen. I appreciate that someone's gonna review the rules and see if I change the rules someday, but right now, that ain't helping anything. I agree with what the chairman said, it's time to establish a, a timeline on when that permit's gonna be issued, and I know that the Board of County Commissioners can ask that board over there to ensure that that timeline is established, and it can be reported back to the county commission. But there's a reason for that, not just because we love Don Wayne Wright, that could be Dennis Music, it could be anybody out there. I've seen those big old craters out there, those huge holes, probably every commissioner up here has, but it's because we spend a fortune on economic development. I mean, the county commissioners that I've worked with over the years have all had an interest in trying to develop business and a far more substantive job base out there than we had ten years ago, eleven years ago. So I go into budget workshops with these guys, and they put huge sums of money on the table, saying, we're gonna go after all these businesses, and try, try to generate a better economy, improve the tax base, but provide the jobs that Commissioner Fleming is talking about. So I'm looking at this as a bottleneck to all of the efforts of this county commission over the years. And the only thing I can think right now when I go home is that, well, there's gonna be a look at the rules, and maybe in October, there will be some relief, maybe, or there will be another request for additional information on RAI from someone to bring something else back in next June or July. And it just doesn't work like that in the private sector. It's painful, you know, I agonize over this stuff. I went to those meetings 'cause I thought, you gotta be kidding me. I had a phone call about three weeks ago, not from Mr. Wayne Wright, but from another gentleman that's investing, fitting in this community. I think these commissioners, knowing probably most of them may, doesn't live here, but he's buying properties here, and he's got plans, and he named some companies that he's working with right now, and he expressed some of these same concerns with water management. In fact, I shared over there, when I was speaking that day of the meeting, that unfortunately, we've got developers coming to Swan County now, saying, we would like to be here, we love the community, we like the small-town feel, but what are you going to do to us? That's what I shared then, and that's really what they're asking us today. What are we gonna do to these people in order for them to come here and spend their money and, and attract these businesses? Personally, I think it'd be nice if someone could report back to this county commission in another week, what the date is, their decision's gonna be made on this. Not in October, or not whenever the rules can be changed. I mean, to think that you have to wait for rules to change to get this thing approved, that's really far in practice from what we need right now. But again, I know it's not your fault, like, you're not involved in the review process, someone else is, but the reality is, we need this stuff done now, we need all those homes. The chairman and I, we've met with people that would like to build homes here, and, and every year, let me, for years, every year, the city, and the county, and the school board met, and we talked about all of the needs that need to be addressed in order for us to continue to have enough services available for the group, and one of the biggest things was housing. That's one of the biggest things. And I, you know, I heard back when Mr. Music was entertaining some companies before wanting to build houses, I heard that was going on. And I mean, it's like, all of those conversations have stagnated over this issue of water retention. And I've heard all the stories about us being required to retain far more water than any of the other districts in the entire state. I'm not an engineer, I don't know if that's true, but if it's true, something's wrong. I complimented, I complimented at the time Leroy Marshall. For years, if we had a question about anything, I would call Leroy. I'd drive over there to Water Management, pick him up, we'd go out and look at things, and he would make some decisions based on institutional knowledge and common sense. And I think that's all anyone is asking for here. The problem with the rules is that maybe the rules don't provide for institutional knowledge and common sense. Maybe that's the provision that needs to be there. Anyway, I appreciate you being here, but I'd sure like to see someone get a date back to the Board of County Commissioners real soon, because we, several of us are still dealing with developers right now, and investors that wanted to build businesses here, that we are talking to on a regular basis, and it's concerning to me, and I'm sure other commissioners that are meeting with some of those companies right now. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Wayne Wright, why don't we look at getting these plans? I wanna, I wanna clarify that, that's, that's, that's really what we've been dealing with right there. Y'all see that was a fair red statement tonight? They know that I ain't leaving no stone unturned, the director knows exactly where I'm going, exactly the square wheels getting the drifts, all right? That was such a misrepresentation. Do you know the twenty-seven holes that I told y'all about? Ashley was standing down in my hole with another lady when I asked, could I just dig this thing out and score that thirty thousand dollars, making my hole big, to make a beautiful lake down here, that we could build houses all the way around? Ain't allowed to do that. Need to do the drills, it's the rule. I'm telling y'all the facts, all right? We've been waiting on them to score these mud puddles that have invasive trees in there that NRCS wants me to spray out, Chinese Towels take it over everywhere, all right? So they've been waiting on their people to score a useless mud hole in the bottom of fifty, thirty-five foot down in the ground. So when I'm really mad, me and the director, and Ashley and Greg walked down in the hole. So we trying to find solutions. I'm telling y'all, I matter to hell. And we, we finding solutions. So the director, he says, well, Don, instead of building that berm over there on Mr. Strayer's, now, if you could actually, we're thirty-five foot down in the hole, thirty foot below one twenty-nine, we're sitting here trying to figure out how my water's not gonna go up to Pick and Save, if y'all can comprehend that, all right? That's what we're talking about, Pick and Save, all right? So he says, well, why don't you just dig this out and make this prettier down there, do away with that useless slow-scoring wetland with invasive trees, and put a pretty mow around the top, and put them wetlands around the top of the top. I look at Greg, and I say, Greg, why don't we do that? And he just laughed, and I said, Ashley, why don't we do that? Because you wouldn't let me do that. Now, seven months later, the director's got common sense. Ashley has no common sense. I'll kick her under the bus here. These RAIs is personal, it's not the rule. The rule don't say, your topo has so many lines, that I don't like the format you sent it to me. I can't read the slope on your ditch, but DOT, Greg turns those same prints into DOT, and Greg asked her, this is what we're dealing with, y'all. Greg asked her, Ashley, you can't read the prints because you've never seen a ditch built. You've never seen a berm built. She tries to fly past that question, and he said, no, you've never seen, you don't know how to read the prints. All right, I don't mind kicking her under the bus here tonight. This is what's been going on for over a year, and for him to sit here and misrepresent that they're waiting on us? Greg called me Monday morning, Don, are you sure you want the change? We've got her in a corner, she can't ask much more. Now, we got to totally redesign your hole, we got to get a report from Mike Fuller to do away with that wetland and design, put silverscrares around the top, it's gonna take a day or two. Please don't do this. I said, Greg, it'll enhance the property, it'll, it'll make it more developable around it, and he said, you are opening yourself up for her to beat you to death, all right? The prints that he just misrepresented was just come about while he was standing in the bottom of the hole, coming up with some common sense ideals that we asked for ten months ago, but was denied, but I had to spend the twenty-seven thousand dollars. So what I'm telling y'all, this is an Ashley Stefani problem. This is a, a director's problem that has allowed staff to be out of hand, all right? Nobody could work for me and, and misrepresent me, like, nobody could work for any one of y'all and have a personal vengeance against, uh, uh, Greg Bailey. Greg has stepped on her toe more than once. Randy mentioned Leroy Marshall. I was trying not to bring up names till he misrepresented me, like. Leroy Marshall has stood out there on that property, one-on-one with Greg, Dennis, Mike Fuller, and myself, and got a permit for every single thing that we've done, we could stand there and agree with the same exact rules that is in place with Ashley, the same exact rules, but yet, in thirty to forty-five days, we could have a permit. Now, what's changed? The rules ain't changed, not one rule has changed. He's misrepresented that. If it's not the rules, it's Ashley. Tori can stand up here and tell y'all, she has beat Greg Bailey to death on this project, all right? In every other project, and the board members know it. We have a staff problem, not a rule problem. So what I asked them in that meeting the other day, you understand my frustration? I said, turn my permit down. Please turn my permit down, where I can plead my case to the board, just like y'all, all right? Is there any doubt in y'all's mind that I would end up walking away with that permit from that board meeting? Nor is there any doubt in the board members' mind, but I'm a hundred fifty thousand dollar into this project, all right? So Tori can probably tell y'all a timeframe. How long do y'all think it takes an engineer to totally redesign a hole and design wetland around the top? So if we get it this week, we're lucky. So I had this talk with the director, I said, I said, Hugh? He called me at eight-thirty at night, after the city council meeting. I said, am I gonna get another RAI when this plan comes in, exactly like you telling me and Greg to design? I mean, exactly. We're gonna do it to the T, exactly what you said. Am I gonna get another RAI? And he said, Mr. Wayne Wright, I give you my word, we're resolving this problem. It has to come across my desk. So who else has the luxury of raising hell like I have? To where? The director's gonna look at the permit? He's gonna, he's gonna do her like she's in kindergarten now? Y'all understand my problem? And so, what about Bill Smith? What about Dennis Music? What about Daniel Craps and all of them in Lake City? It's one lady who's turning every bit of this down, and so I've asked the director to fire her. I've asked the board members to fire her. I'm not stopping, because y'all should read these RAIs, they are so ridiculous. So, not him, but he's part of the problem too, because he kicked the can down the road and he read a pre, pre-statement, and has no idea of the facts of my case, never been to my home, never done anything. So I'm asking the board to call the director one-on-one, I'm asking you to call every board member one-on-one, I'm asking you to help change these rules so that Swan County can compete with Baker County. You have no idea how many people's looked at that property in front of Walmart, and then just call Greg and him, get the facts on it, call Brian Pittman, get the facts on it, we'll take our project elsewhere. Nobody's gonna develop this property like that. So I appreciate it, y'all. I hate to be, I love Swan County. You know, I could make a living anywhere like many of you. I love this county. People's been good to me here, they've been good to my family. My children have been lucky enough to make a living here. When you drive by that restroom, many of y'all don't know this, every person that I know told me I was a fool to build that restroom. For a long time, I thought I was a fool to build that restroom, but I prayed about it. I sat up there on that hill, and I worked, and I built that restroom. Wasn't for me. But look at how the community has supported my children. Y'all know that right there, there's eighty employees there? From a dream, all right? How many other people are being held up? But I didn't get held up building that project. How many other people are getting held up, like, like Clyde said? How many other people's children are not as lucky as mine, and are having to leave this county because we have a personal grievance? Or you just don't have the experience to read the prints? Or is it all the above, all right? But if we get involved, if, if y'all come to me with a problem, I try to solve it. Now, I'm coming to y'all with a problem, and I, I appreciate the community calling the director. They're gonna need to ring off the hook, because we need these houses, Randy said it the best. You know what stopped this Swan County from getting a big plant to come in? We don't have rooftops, all right? Then we don't have the businesses to support it. Well, it's kinda like a standoff. If we can't get the rooftops, we can't get the businesses. If we can't get the businesses, we can't get the rooftop. I'm tired of hearing that. I want a solution, and you, you guys tonight, I seen tonight the commission work better together than, than I've ever seen, all right? Never in history can I remember the city reaching out to y'all for help, or y'all reaching out to the city and craving a project. But we both understand, that road y'all paved up there? We both understand that those people live in the county, they spend money in the city, and, and we're all together on this. I'm not opposed to water management, I know they got a job. I'm opposed to one person changing to where she's now, the old man saying everything. I'm tired of that. And so, I'm pleading my case, I, I stand up to the public and ask them, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this stuff. Live Look has really been good to me. And, and when you look at that project, when you ride through there twenty years from now, you'll see how that project has put Live Look on the map and took some of these tax problems that we're having away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We didn't have anything on that board?
Tori Humphries was in, yes. Greg Bailey is not here, because we had a prior engagement, handling the county's board meeting presentation over there. We have started on the redesign, we have started on the plans, that is not drawing a couple lines on paper and turning those in, so our goal is to be done by the end of next week. That's the goal. There is other people involved, because it does have wetlands involved, so we have- So, um, we have manpower on it and are working on the redesign now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anybody else hold the speaker? Uh, with that being said, I'd like permission from the board to write a letter to Water Management to express our concerns and see where we get with that. Mr. Chair.
We need to send that letter back where we thought we-
Oh, I will.
Now, you going to write that yourself, Mr. Chair?
Well, sure, I don't know if you really want me to write it. And if that's where I can, I'd like for all of you to sign. I want to know we all-
We, we can prepare it later for everyone's signature, Chair.
That's what I want.
We can do that, and then those numbers ready, and then swing by your office and sign it.
And to be fair to everybody, I've talked to Mr. Wayne Wright, I called Mr. Hugh today. I invited Mr. Hugh to come tonight, he sent representation, so I would really like to sing to him here, but I think we got, getting somewhere with this, and I just hope that happens really good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Liston, I mean, if you direct him, you have a letter ready tomorrow. Tell him some hairs.
You won't wait around, or you want to go up to him or?
I'm just saying, we get it out the door, we're a part of here.
I would like to have it tomorrow.
We'll just take three roads off that desk, we just had-
Just make sure Chad don't deliver it, I'm not sure.
We'll have, we'll have that-
You don't even write it either.
Uh, with that being said, I think that completes everything, I miss anything, anybody? I'm good with that, so, uh, well, we've long, uh, any closing comments, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
For that.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't skip a point. Any public comments other than what we already had? Name and address, please.
Stephanie Blue, I- nineteen, Kell Avenue. Just want to follow up on this previous discussion. Uh, just a couple of weeks ago, Chairman, Commissioner Lamb, you know, we attended a economic development meeting. One thing I took from that meeting is that sometimes government gets in the way. And with that being said, you've already said you want to write a letter. You need to write that letter and tell them that you can get out the way. Wesley, Wesley over there is my classmate, and he don't see how I live here. We here because we love Swanee County. We want to see Swanee County grow. It goes, man, needs to get out the way. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak? That, that was very long, it was very, she got it before you.
Yes, sir, I still don't have anything to say.
For that. Yes, sir. Mr. Flynn.
I think I've said it all, but I want to add this to it also, that, um, for the ones that are watching the video on TV, the ones that feel tonight, the first thing that will beat up on the commission, why this ain't done? Why that ain't done? Just said, just said, Swanee County, the whole of it. Why we don't have, why we don't have, uh, feeders, why I dare, uh, sufficient jobs? To me, you can't tell me that Swanee County's been saying it out. Someone in Swanee County's been saying it out, God. Uh, I, I used to go to those rental, uh, executive board meetings, economic development. And they talked about incentives related to incentives in Chicago, Illinois, keep talking about, uh, jobs and interest率, the jobs that would become in this one county, the possibility of having these type of jobs. Some individuals, as name, you call Ask, I don't know, the last name, but anyway, these individuals stand in our way, and you said government, they're standing in our way. Some individuals, they say, why this ain't done, why that ain't done? If because of someone singles out one individual and you can't get what you want, or what you're asking for. You're holding up long projects and, and I'm glad for the support tonight, uh, that individuals come in and state in their case that, that we can get, uh, things done. So that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, Mr. Wayne Wright mentioned a lot of names of, of companies that want to come here. And there's some big-time names that can't be mentioned in this, MBAs that have non-disclosure agreements. Uh, so I mean, it's ready to go, we're just, we're just got problems that we got to solve to make it happen. And, uh, we're all capable of getting it done. Those folks over there, they'll work with us. I mean, it's, uh, just need to know how important it is. And obviously, sometimes we get, uh, personalities in the lady and it causes slows it down, but we're going to work through that, make it happen. That's what we're here for, that's what we're going to do, that's all we got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, I appreciate Mr. Wayne Wright coming, always doing out there, and the risk that he's taking that our community would benefit from, and, and there's other developers and investors here that are taking some of the same risks, you know, making this community better and, you know, for the people that live here. Um, thank you, thank you, Ben, for coming too. Hope you understand that our frustration is not personal, just a process, so hopefully we'll fix that soon. Um, I would say, thank you, Mr. Stocker, his hat fits nicely. Swanee brought all the baseball teams playing in the regional final here at seven o'clock. Right over here at the baseball field, I'm leaving here, you want Shrek there to cheer them on? If they win this, they'll be in the final four. So, go Dawgs, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Hill?
Uh, just, I go with everyone of your comments there, doing, appreciate our staff and all the hard work that you do. Uh, not just inside the buildings, but outside on those dirt roads, and, uh, Mr. Wayne Wright kind of hit it on the head. We, we got an obligation here as a board, you know, you guys said that, and you can, you can go back and name a dog, and you tell them we beat you up, if you will, but we just need some help. These folks need help, not just him, like I said, it's still the folks that are going to be here, we want them to be part of our community. We did it, so, uh, with that being said, don't forget to pray for your neighbor, I had mentioned that in the last little bit. We all need to lift things up, and you can lift it up, and that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Now, I will pull it, listen to the, the thing here, but Ben, thank you for coming and really, I'm not trying to beat you up. Mr. Wayne Wright, appreciate you coming, presenting your case to us, we will be right there tomorrow. Uh, just so people understand, a thirty million dollar investment is about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars to the county a year in tax, tax money. Not counting the schools, Water Management District, and everything else, and, and the employees that go along with that. So when you start talking about holding some, I'm sorry, holding something up, that's the kind of money you're talking about. And that benefits all of us. With that being said, that's all I got, and, uh, just the emotion, it was in the top of my head. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, safety by Commissioner Lamb, all in favor, I?
Ah.